We'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, or six, 2024 City Council Meeting of the City of Wyndham. Okay, so tonight on the consent agenda are included the minutes of the council meeting from July 16th, license applications that include exempt gambling permit, Cottonwood County visits forever on 9/14/24, exempt gambling permit, St. Francis Xavier Church, 9/15/24, exempt gambling permit, Wyndham Mount Lake Cobras Youth Football, 10/19/24, exempt gambling permit, Lions Club, 12/7/24, and temporary liquor permit Wyndham Lions Club at Teagles Park, and that would be September 20th, 2024. Also included are the regular bills. Any comments or questions from the council?
I would make a motion to accept or to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second it.
Motion, Jenny, seconded by Scott, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Comments? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Department heads. I'm gonna call on Tiffany then. And this could fall under a part of it, under a latter item, under flood mitigation efforts, but I think we've had some important news from FEMA and with the individual assistance and that they're in our community, and we'll let Tiffany take it from here and explain what's happening.
Absolutely. Tiffany Lamb, EDA Director. I'll speak basically on two separate parts, the first being individual assistance and then the second being public assistance. On individual assistance, since the last council meeting, we have been approved for that for Cottonwood County. And so what that means is our community members can now actually apply for that assistance. There's three main ways to apply for that, and that's at disasterassistance.gov, through the FEMA app, or at 1-800-621-3362. So a variety of ways to do that application. It's fairly simple, takes less than 10 minutes total to do so. Within 10 days of applying, there is a possibility of having either a phone call, a text, or an email, scheduling an inspection on the property. Generally, those are triggered if somebody says that their home is not livable currently, then FEMA generally wants to do an inspection. Otherwise, it appears to be mostly random on people being selected for that. But that is a possibility. With that, they do wear identifying clothing, but we do recommend that people always ask to see their badge. They will have a Department of Homeland Security issued badge that includes a photograph of themselves on it. If there's ever any concerns about that, then folks are able to call the main FEMA line and ask if this is a verifiable visit from a FEMA official. So that is a possibility. Right now, they are going door to door, which PD and dispatch are well aware of, and what they're really doing is offering a program that's called Disaster Survivor Assistance, and that's what they do in communities that are very hard hit, generally from something like a hurricane or a tornado. We're basically getting the executive treatment type of situation with this, where they're making sure that nobody's left behind. So they know that in situations like this, where there's such a high degree of damage, so many homes impacted, that there are residents that are unable to leave their homes, either due to disabilities or just being seniors, whatever it is. And so they're trying to make sure that those folks are captured in this, and that they're not losing access to assistance because they can't get out to another location, or they can't fill out the online or phone application. They just need the technical assistance. So they're going through addresses in town. They've had three teams out for the last several days. Today was their fourth day in the community. And in speaking with them, just a little bit ago, the response has been fantastic to that. They've said that as far as the community being cooperative and helping them get through those fast, giving them the information quickly and having it available, they said that the community's been very well prepared. So thank you to everybody who has had their documentation ready, their information ready for those visits. That's key for them to be able to get through all of the addresses quickly. They were tonight set up at a table location for Night to Unite. They said that that went quite well. They did have quite a stack of applications, of their paper applications that they got through, and they said that that was highly successful. They are looking at being at the county fair. They have a request in through Paul Johnson, our emergency management director to, with the county, to have that at the fair. There's not been response back from the state yet approving or denying that. So he's still working on that avenue to see if that will be an option to have them at the fair. Otherwise, they would be looking at another location. So everybody should just keep a good eye on the news. We've been making sure that the newspaper, that KDOM radio, that they're putting out the information as well, which we're very grateful to them for doing, but also sharing widely across social media. So as soon as there's another in-person location where community members can visit, then we will get that out. The other piece to speak to is public assistance. So that is the aid that comes directly back to the city, the county, the state for disaster-related expenses. We had the applicant briefing for that on July 31st, last Wednesday, and we did at that time do our official application for public assistance. We got that all input. At that time, we did bring up the possibility of the swimming pool replacement. That would be considered a long, a large project under their programs, but is a potential public assistance program idea. So just something to keep in mind, we did already bring that up, just to make sure that that is a possibility, that we can have that discussion with them. The next step with that is in around two to three weeks, we'll have a FEMA meeting where we'll be assigned basically a FEMA person to work with, and at that time, we'll be given up to 90 days to submit a list of projects. So that basically means that we need to have all possible public assistance projects and a estimated cost within 90 days of that meeting. So essentially, 120 days or so from now puts us roughly beginning of November. That will need to know. So for anything, whether it's a culvert, the pool, any project like that, we'll need to have a pretty decent idea to get that into them for it to be an eligible expense. Now, one thing we did learn in that meeting, that'll actually probably come back around when we are having the funding discussion, is that non-certified levies are not an eligible public assistance expense. So if it's not been certified by the Army Corps of Engineers, it is not eligible. And in addition, the expenses for the temporary levy would not be eligible if we tried to put that through as a non-certified levy. So they did make it clear that there is some additional scrutiny that's needed when we're looking at how to fund anything for flood mitigation. We did have the mayor there, Steve was there as well, so when we get to the funding discussion, they can speak to that more, I'm sure. But that's what I got. If there's any questions, more than happy to answer those.
Council questions? That's amazing. You answered every concern that we had.
Thank you.
Thank you. And we will discuss some of these items a little bit later, and we may need to refer to Tiffany on some of those items as well. Okay, other department heads? Nope, saving it for later on your individual items. Okay, next item, resolution accepting a donation. This is from Wyndham Area Health regarding the pickleball courts, additional striping and nets at the tennis court. And that was a welcome amount of 1,000...
Eight hundred ninety-nine.
Eight ninety-nine ninety-eight. Okay. And I would entertain someone to thankfully introduce that resolution.
I'll make a motion to accept the donation from the Wyndham Area Health.
I'll second.
Resolution introduced by Scott and seconded by Marv. Is there any discussion? Well, that's for a roll call.
Espen.
Yes.
Benson.
Yes.
Quaid.
Yes.
Nelson.
Yep.
Grunig.
Okay. One of the larger items on our discussion list, and hopefully action of some nature, is the flood mitigation efforts. Prior, and this is continuing some funding options that were discussed last meeting and will be again this evening. And there was, this was briefly mentioned, I think, and it was for a special consideration, and it could be part of a future farm bill. And that is for designation to USDA, emergency fundings for water, water projects, wastewater projects, that sort of thing, the things that normally USDA can fund through their programs. Sometimes, this has happened when that windstorm went through here in 2022. And the year later, in 2023, Congress Federal had appropriated funds through an appropriation request that gave USDA authority to give out grants for items that were damaged because the money was not used up. And there was, I know, a water tower that was damaged down in Rock County that received a new water tower because it was structurally unfit, and that was paid for through this program. And so Steve and I were up at Farm Fest today and visit with congressional staff. We're fortunate that we have a local representative for Senator Klobuchar. Senator Klobuchar is a high-ranking official in the farm program. And when it comes to that time, she, Thomas Leopold is her aide's name. He's the, her chief of staff under the, for the farming side of it out in DC. We visited with him today, both Steve and I individually, and they're receptive to talking about that. Also, we touched base with Michelle Fishbach on the same type topic. She welcomes that discussion, and we'll see what we can do to move that forward. So also, we met the House Whip, Tom Emmer, up there. Same type of cordial introduction and discussion, and that's an important part of getting something like that done. So I mention that because it still could be an option, but it's down the road ways. You know, we're talking, when's the next budget gonna be passed, federal budget? And I don't think any of us here know that. So that's down the road. And so these funding options that we're continuing discussion on included the items that are up there right now, the debt funding, grant application, state bonding request, local option sales tax, stormwater utility fee, general fund reserve use, property tax increase, one-time or short duration, were the items that were on the discussion list last meeting. The council took action, just authorizing at this time for staff and Steve himself, to draft a local option sales tax, because that is a time-sensitive, I believe, by...
August 13th.
August 13th. That needs to be in. And so that's the opportunity, I think, that needs a lot of discussion. And I would like Steve to, yes, you go through that as warranted, and if the council has any questions, please ask Steve about that process and other funding options as well. Marv's getting ready to push the button. No? Okay.
Right. Thank you, Mayor. Pretty much as we discussed last meeting, we kind of went through all these options. And, you know, by no means are any of them exclusive. It doesn't mean we're gonna go down this certain option and not look at other stuff, you know? But with like state bonding, last year was a bonding bill. Now the state didn't pass a bonding bill. Who knows what they're gonna do in 2025? There may be a bill, maybe not. But even those have requirements for a local match. And so if we did apply for that next year, or whatever down the line, we still would be on the hook for some local match. As the mayor pointed out, there's some possible federal options, but again, those are, you know, kind of down the line, but also kind of longer shot opportunities. But we're gonna pursue those, because we do have some of the relationships with the congressional folks, and they've offered help. So let's, at least we can ask, right? So that's where we're at. As far as the last discussion, I think you had pretty much talked about, you know, pursuing those grant opportunities, state bonding requests as they come back. You're not real interested in stormwater utility fee, nor increasing, having a property tax bump, either short-term or one-time. So that kind of left you a few opportunities. General Fund Reserves, you've committed some dollars towards keeping that levy that was improved, the one going north from Highway 62. As Tiffany pointed out a little bit earlier, work on that, because it is non-certified levy. FEMA will pay if we go around and take that clay back off that bank, but they won't pay anything if we leave it on. And I think the discussion at this council was to leave that on and leave that flood protection measure in place, and, you know, improve it, put the black dirt on, get it seeded. So we've started that work. So that is going to be a cost you're going to absorb. And then if the council decides to move forward at a future point on that earthen berm through Island Park, again, that probably will not be a FEMA-certified, or I'm sorry, US Army Corps of Engineers-certified levy. There's a lot of time that takes, a lot of engineering, and a great deal of expense to do that versus getting one and putting it in. So if you do decide to move forward with that, that will not be a FEMA-eligible expense. That will be on us. So just so you know.
If I could just interject one on that, is we would have to go through the Corps of Engineers to have it certified. We believe that the location that we're talking about is that that is something that the city could continue. We talked about, you know, if we self-funded it, you know, that could be built. And in working with Minnesota DNR, who have not had a total full response yet, I think that's a work in progress, that we can, we can get that done. But that, like Steve said, would be at our expense. Sorry.
So that was the point. So kind of at the end of the last meeting, you'd have to put together at least a, the opportunity for you to consider a local option sales tax. Generally, they're fairly common, getting more common in the state of Minnesota. They're generally between 1% and a half of a percent. We ran the numbers off the last Department of Revenue increase. That information was in, in the packet last time. And so what I did in this packet is basically took some of that information and just applied it to a small table here to show you if you implemented a quarter percent, half percent, three-quarter percent, or 1% tax, and then just over a duration, three, five, or 10 years. And this is how much it could potentially raise. And that estimate is based on 500,000 a year. That number comes from Department of Revenue, and Wyndham being a majority share of the sales in Cottonwood County, that's kind of where we're at. So that's, I guess, where we're at for this, the process a little bit. If you guys, the council does approve moving forward, it is a ballot question. It will go to the voters in November. So the voters have ultimate say on a local option sales tax, up or down. That would be 100% the voters' choice. So that's your step, is if you approve it tonight, we give it to the county auditor, it goes on to the ballot for November, then the voters can decide if they want to impose that tax or not. Okay? So if it is approved in November, then we do have to go to the legislature. The legislature has to approve it, and the governor has to sign it. And as I talked last time, the legislature put in a moratorium on requests for local option sales tax until June 1 of 2025. But this potentially could be a different legislature because there is an election in November. So there could be some changes in that that, you know, maybe that stays, maybe that goes out the window. I do not know. But just know that, you know, it, just because you pass step one or step two, there's a long path ahead to it. One question the mayor did ask me after the last meeting was, you know, even if it passes and everything goes according to HOIL, and the legislature approves it in June, which is when laws become active, typically June, 1st of July, it goes to Department of Revenue. They've got 90 days to even set up collection of the tax, and then you start collecting after that point in time. So that's quite a ways out. The question the mayor had asked is, if this passes and it gets through the legislative process, at that point, could the city use the local option sales tax as a mechanism to pay back debt? So if you wanted to spend the dollars on flood mitigation projects earlier, but then the, waiting for all the collections to come in, you could do that. You could use that sales tax collection as the mechanism to pay back a bond, a general obligation or some other kind of bond. So there would be that, that option. So, but of course, there'd be interest attached to that, and that would, you know, reduce a little bit that you've got for project dollars. But there would be an opportunity to get those dollars a little quicker and get the projects done a little faster than waiting for the three, five, seven, 10 years for this tax to all to roll in. So I think that was an important question to answer. So I guess at this time, I'll stop, see if anybody's got questions about the process or anything else related to it. Mary did look through the, appreciate what she did. She looked through the statutes, and a little bit had changed since the, 2013 was the last time the city council had approved moving on to the next step, which at that time was to go to the legislature. And so there was a little bit of a change on, you have to put in kind of what project and how much you think the project is gonna cost, and how long it would take to collect the monies for that. And so in the resolution that's in there, you'll see some blanks in there, because I don't know what, if you decide to move forward, what percent you want to have and what the duration is. The other thing that we would look at is, there's a couple of projects in here. We don't have things overly specific nailed down, other than the permanent levy in Island Park. I've got that pegged between 175 and 500,000, because if the levy goes kind of right along the back of the homes and goes right-of-way to right-of-way, it's a fairly short run. But if it were to go further down into the park, there'd be quite a bit more expense to that. But as you haven't, you know, gotten to that point yet, and you determined where that levy's gonna go, I put a range in so that you had some flexibility in there in case there's some other costs that get incurred. And then the other piece of it is, proposed projects for utilizing up to 2 million in local option sales tax, which would then be for the municipality to rebuild and alleviate flooding on city streets, which is then accessing businesses, commercial district, major employers, senior housing, schools, hospital, county facilities. That's the regional significance that you have to also have in your resolution. And so that would be the rationale for those. So that's why this one's a little, little more wordy than the last resolution you had, is we're hitting the points in the statute that we need to hit. So.
Steve, we have, are there three blanks we need to fill in? Could you specify the items that the council needs to...
Yep. The blanks are, if you were to propose a local option sales tax to the voters, it would be at what percent? What's the duration of that tax? And then that will then determine that 502 million that's further down in the resolution. I just used the 2.5 million because that was kind of the middle of the table. It wasn't, the low end wasn't the high end, and so I just did that. So, because we need to have a number in there. So that number can change based on what this council's decision is and what discussion. But those are the first two blanks I need tonight, are the duration and the percentage, if the council wants to go down that path. I'll go back to the table.
Yes. We'll go back to the table, and I think there'll be plenty of questions on this. Did we, did we include, I think it does, in the verbiage, but Red Leaf Court area?
Not specifically. It just says alleviate flooding on city streets, and it also has to prove a region, it also has to prove your regional significance. So.
Well, it has a regional significance for the people at Redwood, Red Leaf Court. Well, that's my argument. Okay. But we're working on the study for that as well. Council, your comments?
I guess I wish that there were a few more identified projects, because I don't look at levies as being flooding solutions. The issue with the river is the capacity is in the width, not the depth. And by adding levies, you're not providing a solution, you're just moving water to a different area and possibly making the river wider. But I understand that we're up against a timing. It's a timing thing with the sales tax thing. It just would be more comfortable to me if we had specific identified approved projects beyond levies that I could understand would help alleviate the issue.
Thank you, Marv, for that question, and I agree with some of your comments myself. I think with that levy, I don't think that stops there, because there was discussion with Minnesota DNR on, you know, could we do that? And yes, we likely can, and we're going through that process. But at the same time, when I was sitting at that table, he said, there are grants, you know, they, they won't be total, total, but it's to alleviate is floodgates. And I had mentioned that before. Floodgates, in my mind, need to go into the verbiage, okay? Because that's a mediation thing to get it downstream. Jackson won't like it, but that's what communities do upstream. You know, and I think that could be something, floodgates. I think we're gonna have, it'd be a cost share. It would be, at the same time, I think that involves Mendot, because you have two crossings that would have to be done, and the railroad. That's a time-consuming process, as I think I understand it. So getting three major entities to agree, or four, railroad, state of Minnesota, city of Wyndham, and DNR to agree. So to me, that, that resolve, it's not just the dike, but I think what needs to go with it is the potential of floodgates. That would alleviate, I think, some of your concern. That would alleviate, I think, some of your concern. Would that be true?
Did we get anybody to look at what it would do with we, the force of that water? If we put the floodgates in and put our berm behind the house, the, the force of that water going through there towards the railroads and towards the highway there? Have we got anybody looking at that kind of stuff? Because that's going to put a lot more force down, downstream than anywhere, and it's going to take out a lot of our homes back, back up nearby, like the old trailer court back up in that area? Because that's all banked and there ain't no, nothing saving that bank. It's all dirt and could all be washed away real quick. Yeah, down, down river bats, past where the sewer line is, all that wastewater back in there, that whole hill back inside there? Because I think if you force that water from up here down that way, it's going to stream it, oops, having trouble with this thing. But anyway, it's going to stream it more to a, to a point, to a thing, so it's going to have more force as a water pressure thing, type of thing?
Now you're getting to the hydrology part of it and, you know, the movement of water and they're ripping out the, the corners and that. That, that is a concern, but that's why, you know, I think you need to look at that. If that's your shot at, at mitigating so you don't have it, so you get the water downstream faster, right? That's the goal of this. That's why it takes cooperation because you cannot just do a floodgate on 62 and a floodgate on, on the highway 671. Because it would all be stockpiled potentially if you don't go under the railroad tracks with one, right? And so it's the same type of concept. And yes, that all has to be studied. You know, there may be areas that have to be rip wrapped, like with a lot of material. But that's the long-term part of it. I think this is, it would be okay, in my opinion. I would still like the actual, maybe even say development part of the floodgates. Do the berm up as something we could, or the levy, whatever you want to call it, to do something temporary. I'd hate for this to happen again in a couple of years. And I, you know, and I think that's a temporary thing, but I think we need, you're going to need funding to do the studies and, and work towards that ultimate goal of getting that water downstream of Wyndham with all the things you said. The bank stabilizations, we have a, a corner right now, you know, down from the Sogi home in that corner that is sloughing off more again after this one. So, you know, it's, it's both short-term and long-term. And I, I don't disagree, as Marv said, to look at some of the mitigation stuff, but, and I'm just asking Steve, can part of this language be for more long-term mitigation? Engineering or something? Because I.
It's for, yeah, it's for whatever you can fit into that other, you know, project of regional significance. I'm not, you know, an expert in what, you know, this or this will mean, but if you read just the language, this, other proposed projects utilizing 2 million in local option sales tax proceeds, which would take four years to rate includes street and stormwater improvements within municipality and to rebuild and alleviate flooding on city streets, accessing businesses, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So it's all part of that. And to Marv's point, that's why the legislative statute calls out specific projects. We don't have those at this time, just due to the situation and the time that we're in, to have those all engineered out and have all the drawings, all the specs, all those things done. So that's why this is kind of generic and put together is to give the council as much wiggle room as you can. And as far as answering Councilmember Benson's question, we have contacted S E H Engineering who did our floodplain study and stuff and asked them to do hydraulic modeling of potential earth and levy in Island Park. So we're waiting for them to get back to us on the cost of that and whatnot we'll bring to you guys to, to do. So before anything we're done, we want to get that modeled and have that effort done.
A question after, after a term of five years in the collection of these dollars, and if the community sees progress, you know, if this was voter-approved and the community seen progress, can you continue the sales tax with voter approval after that?
It goes, yeah, you go through essentially the same process, but you then also have time to get those other things together that you're talking about. The dollars and the engineering and those, the costs, that kind of thing.
The point is, it's not just going to go away in a matter of a year or two. But I, I think there's, we, there's things that we can do. I think the levy is one of them. That just seems a waste of dollars if we remove that clay from the park, but I guess FEMA's not going to pay for the use of it if we put it back there. Council have any suggestion for Steve to fill in any blanks or even if you want to move forward with this?
I guess I've been asked a couple of times by different people that what all is going to be taxed, every sale in the city? Whether it be clothing, food, gas?
Whatever is sales taxed now. So if you have food and clothing that's now currently exempt, it'll remain exempt.
That's what I told him, I hope I hadn't lied, but. And then my thing also is with like what you say, how long is it, you know? From looking at the tables and everything that you had there, the money could come in quite fast. How soon can that money be used? You know, our budget's coming up here pretty quick. And, you know, and of course, we can't count on that because we don't know. So I guess.
Councilmember, you probably wouldn't count on anything until it's after it's through the legislative process. So it goes through the voters first, that's, that's your key first kind of step. And then second would be to get the legislative session, get that approved, get in legislation and get that signed off on. And so at that point, once it's through that approval, that's then maybe when you would want to say, okay, we're going to do it for so long, here's our projected raise, and then have somebody from Ellers come and then tell you what you could borrow against and if you wanted to do that. But you'd be looking at at least mid-2025 before you're to that point.
And we could have a heck of a flood between now and then.
Well, I think that's another question that's just brought up for me is, do we build that levy behind the homes at this point? And do it with other funds? Maybe it's a combination of things, but, and just so I understand it right, FEMA will not even pay us for the placement of that temporary dike? It's not just us, it's the public.
So we had asked them about that when we had the public assistance applicant briefing. If the clay is removed, then it meets all of the requirements. So if it's removed from the place where the temporary levy was built, we can dispose of it wherever we want, which could be a new levy, new location. So, so as long as it's removed and it's not in the, the location that the temporary levy is, then the project's completed. But if it remains in the exact location, then it's ineligible.
Understand. So that means we could utilize that clay that we stockpiled on purpose, so we would have the intent of building that temporary levy. That's why we discussed it. You know, so we can do that and we're going to get, we're going to, it'll be removed from where it is right now, or it won't be put back where it was. We're moving.
It, it was on the sidewalk in the street.
Yep.
So it's been moved from there and cleaned. So we just relocated that clay, yes, to Island Park. So that is fine. Yep, we're, we're good there.
That's good. Thank you.
Sounds like the answer to me.
Sounds like the answer on that one. Scott?
Have we thought about maybe, I know in some places where they have flood, flood damage over and over and over, thought about buying them houses out and taking it down and putting something else up right there?
So there, there is, it's FEMA, they have hazard mitigation funds. We got some of those dollars allocated to us after the last flood event. Some property owners were approached and had no interest in the program. That will come back around. I got an email this week about that, saying if you have flood mitigation needs, get a hold of us and we can have a conversation and stop by. So there is that possibility, but it has to be a willing, you know, property owner type of a situation.
So if they would, for some strange reason, agree to, agree upon that, then we could build something different there besides the berm?
Or? That, that's a whole set of different issues. You're talking about floodway, floodplain and those kind of things. So, yeah, that'd have to be looked at, but yeah, you would potentially have that. It'd have to be remain as publicly owned and, and public space.
And likely only eligible structures that meet code can be put back in, though it has to meet city code. And for instance, even the, the folks that are going to deal with individual assistance have to follow code to bring it up to compliance. Yes, no? Yep, FEMA instructed us that all those homes that have work done to them need to be put up to the code according to city ordinance. We're going to be the bad guys. That was, yeah, that was the FEMA flood insurance program. They came and visited with us, went over all the stipulations, you know, when, when this FEMA team comes through, everything that's rebuilt. You may have homes that have to be raised three feet to meet those needs. Substantially damaged homes. Okay, Steve's got all the correct verbiage.
I don't want to scare everybody, just, just the ones that qualify.
Right. But, you know, that's, that's information that these people will get and will be told. And that's a tough, tough deal when it's your home and you've lived there for 25, 30 years. That's terrible. But that's what the law is.
So some of those homes down there could possibly have to be taken out anyway, right?
Yeah, Steve just said.
It's a possibility, but it's up to the property owners how they want to proceed.
Folks at home, we're having Tiffany come back up to explain this one.
Okay, so just to, to provide some background on this, a, as Steve and Dominic had said, we, we had had a meeting with FEMA about the National Flood Insurance Program about two weeks ago at this point. And basically, the purpose of that meeting was to remind us about the city's role with the National Flood Insurance Program as a participant in that. And about basically enforcing our floodplain ordinance that we are required to have as per that participation. With the floodplain ordinance, there is a, a set of basically code that, that we must follow for structures that are within the floodplain at any given time. And so we do comply with that. We do consider whether structures are within the floodplain anytime there are building permits that are needed on a structure already. What they wanted to ensure is with the severity of damage, particularly with clusters that are in the floodplain, that we are enforcing the floodplain ordinance. We have reviewed that and looked at what damage we have within the floodplain. And essentially, there's 88 homes with a, a variety of damage that exists in them. Some of those structures already comply with the floodplain ordinance because they were built after we had adopted it. So we're removing those from, from the set of homes that we know are within the floodplain. The ones that do not have very much damage, we're removing those. So it's really the homes that are severely damaged. There's an expectation that we would have an inspection of those homes to determine if they're substantially damaged. Substantially damaged is essentially defined as 50% or greater of the most recent tax-assessed value of the structure only. So excluding the property, just the structure. So say you have a $100,000 home, if it's $50,000 or more in repairs, that's really when it triggers this. For folks that have flood insurance, we would provide a, a letter of substantial damage to that homeowner and it would trigger their flood insurance to actually, it basically include a rider at that point that they, they would mitigate for flood, that there would be up to $30,000 in coverage for flood mitigation. So for those folks, it could end up being the benefit that they actually get their home flood mitigated and that their insurance is covering it. What we do end up with the issue is for folks that do not have flood insurance, if they do have substantial damage, which is fairly rare, but for a lower value home is possible, then they would be required to flood mitigate before they get a building permit to actually repair their home to a livable status. So that's where things get a little tricky. It's something that we always do to comply with the program, but i, in a situation like this, there's more homes that it could potentially impact at a given time. Now, they did make it clear that if we did not comply with this, that our residents would not be available for individual assistance. You, you don't get that for your community members if you do not participate in the National Flood Insurance Program and you are additionally ineligible for public assistance for all types except for debris management and emergency response. So there's no other forms of public assistance available either. So we did work out figuring out basically what the, the result would be if we did not have sufficient documentation on this, that we've done the process. Staff have internally been looking through that list, as I said, and just making sure that we are complying while also being very respectful of the situation that our residents
Thank you, Tiffany. Just stay right there in case there's more questions. Other questions, council? It, it gets complicated, for sure.
If it goes, if it doesn't get passed and goes on the ballot, is it only city people that will vote on it? Or is it, it won't be county-wise because there's, okay?
Could you pull, I mean, I can't even think of an instance where, once it's voter-approved and legislatively-approved, if there was a windfall of, I don't know, some other program steps in or something, can, can you stop that at any time? You can't, it stays on there. Okay. Question I had was, can you take the 1% off? Not until, until you met the thresholds of?
Basically sunsets.
Sunsets.
Close to sunset.
Okay. Okay. If the council were to approve it, do you have any uh, uh, terms that you would like to put into the blanks?
Well, looking at the chart, I don't think there's based on the, the flooding issues that Wyndham had and still has. I don't see a number on there that's too big.
Okay. Are you suggesting one percent?
Well, if I was totally in favor of it, I would suggest the one percent over ten years.
Now you as council members are gonna have to read each other's minds on this. This is a, I mean, it's a tough call.
Yeah, I guess I kind of go along with that same thinking. The only problem I have is when you said you can't add anything or anything like that until you've reached that amount or the time has run out. Now, last budget year and since then, there's been some issues with streets and money. And that was one of my thinking is somehow where we could tie it in. But not if it's, you know, we've got to get it to the legislature by, or get it on the vote by.
A comment on that, you know, and, and Mark said the one percent and I would probably support the one percent. The uh, but I guess myself, I would limit it to five years. And my reasoning just does for comments. Because you could bring this back to, to the voters. If, if you've seen projects being done in three years because you can borrow against this money and you can start doing the work. And you know, I, I get it, this is kind of your, you may feel it's your one shot. But I think we need to prove to the community that we would spend the money wisely and get something done. And if that is five years, bring it back to the voters for a continuation of it for another five years after that. But that's just my thoughts. Looking for council comments.
I know when the last, when I had the floor, when I asked people to come up and talk to me about this subject of to me personally, I've had some people say, wasn't for it. But I've had a lot of people say, right at this time with the, the dire needs that's people needing, it's hard to put another tax on some people. And I just, I, I was for it when I first thought about it. But it's just putting more taxes on top of more taxes. I, I, I just don't see how we can do that.
Scott, can I ask you a question? Do these people do all their shopping in Wyndham?
The majority was Wyndham people that come up to me at the United. Yep. And then at the last deal we had out downtown, I had people come up and talk to me about it. And because that's what I wanted. I wanted what people were telling me and I, I've got texts where, yeah, it's business owners come up and told me that some business owners can't handle more taxes on top of taxes. And I just told them and I said, you know, this is what we want. I want to hear what people want to say because I want to be the voice. What they tell me what to do because I know what I want to do personally, but I want to do what they want me to do. And that's what the majority of the people that I have talked to is, is, was, was saying towards this type of thing.
And my, my comment, way I asked you that question is if they go to Worthington or they go to Mankato or a lot of other cities in our regional area, they're already paying a sales tax of one percent or more in addition to what we're doing in Wyndham. And you know, if it's chasing away people from doing business in our, our community, you know, by adding one percent, that doesn't make sense to me be, you know, for that reason. But I understand and I um, I respect that. But if they're traveling to another community to spend their money, they're already paying it likely in other community, larger communities. That's my only comparison to that argument. So um, but I respect your, your talk with people. Jenny, any comments? Dennis?
I'm in, I'm entirely uh, I'm having a problem with it right now with what we know right now as far as future projects. And, and what kind of funds we need and uh, I'm very much opposed to adding a tax to the, to the, to the community. I guess a sales tax I would prefer over a property tax. I uh, I guess my, my opinion has been brought out before, but um, I'm, I'm, I'm thinking if somebody's gonna buy a new car, are they gonna go out of town to buy it for one percent? I might.
There's no tax on vehicle.
No tax on vehicle, okay. And no sales tax on that vehicle. Okay. Well, that, that.
But a gallon of milk will.
Yeah.
No food, sorry about that.
But yeah, I mean, as far as myself, I don't have a problem with paying one percent more on sales tax. But I'm, I'm still uncomfortable with putting it out to the people. But I guess on the other hand, the people have the choice to say yes or no. So, so.
I agree. The people would have the final say.
They have the final say. So that's, that's up to the public and, and uh, I hope the public hears it, that, you know, they have the right to say no.
I appreciate those comments because that's an important part that you're not making a final decision. You would be putting to the voters the option of saying yes or no to the amounts that you pick. That's what you're asking the voters to do.
I still don't think it's really, really important to have an identified project that everybody would understand would improve the flooding situation in their area. And if it's strictly based in Island Park or wherever, I don't think that people would vote for it. So I think it has to be a, a project explained very well to get an affirmative vote.
But uh, one thing about a, a berm and island park, it protects water from coming back into the downtown area. Had that, that dike not been put up when we did, that would have come a lot closer to the downtown area and uh, you know, the projections were for most of the downtown area to be underwater at one point during this process. And that could happen again.
And you know, when, when we're talking about that levee or berm, we're not only talking about just the levee and berm. We're also talking about gate valves and whatnot in the storm sewer system that will not allow the river to back up to in-town residents. And there must be, I, I don't know how many homes we protected. They were, they were so thankful down there with all the sandbagging help to start with. And then when that dike was bermed and the water went down because we could pump over that, over that, that was, that was uh, what we needed. And they were all, I think the majority of people in that area felt comfort knowing the city did something. And if we can make that more realistic to at least get that in, put some valves in or whatnot. Um, our wastewater guys have talked about that and our street guys with putting valves, mechanical valves, so it doesn't allow the river water to come back up the storm drains. That sort of thing, that needs to be in that project. I don't know what that's going to cost, but I think it's, it's the only one where, that I think we have uh, defined actions that will mitigate some of that water to stay there and not get into, I'm gonna call it thirty-five or forty homes. I don't, something like that in that area. Um, that would have impacted that. Um, without redoing this again the next time. Maybe that's what the council wants to do. I mean, we could do it all over again in a couple of years. I don't think that's the right choice, but um, you know, I think we need to take some positive things. I wish we had projects that we could say. We haven't got our information from SEH on the modeling that we need in the first place. Um, you know, and we'll get that. It's just we're under a crunch time. If the council doesn't want to do anything, you, you, you don't pass it. And then I would like to know what your considerations are for doing something. What's, what, if we don't do this and give the public an opportunity to say yes or no, that's a start and we don't need to sit and do nothing. We need to build that levy, in my opinion. We're committed to moving forward with that. Jenny, thank you for cutting me off.
So as I'm reading this, it looks like the tax revenues assist in flooding of public improvements to help mitigation or mitigate future flooding. And it says including but not limited to the construction of it. So we can add to this. Correct? I mean, this isn't like a, because you know, we don't know, and that's the hard part. We don't know right now all the options and all the things that this money that it could bring in could go to. I mean, we may come up with, by the time any, any of this could possibly pass, um, we could have all sorts of new ideas or new things come up. And the way it's written here, it's, it's including what you have written here, but not limited to that, right? So it's, yeah, it's, it's written really wide open. So I think, yes, I feel like, you know, by November, if we put this on a ballot for the public, would we have maybe a few more ideas possibly, you know, to have out there? But just letting the public know that it's about trying to resolve the flooding issue. And as things develop, because we know, you know, everything doesn't go at a super fast pace. But just to know that it is all about that, trying to prevent this from happening in the future. Um, and just regarding the sales tax thing, I've been back and forth on that so many times in my head. Um, and just with people I've talked with too. And at this point, I'm thinking that I would lean towards more putting it on the ballot and let the public decide. Let them decide, you know, because then I feel like a little bit it's taken off of, you know, like, okay, we've made this decision that here, public, you decide, we want to try to fund and do what we can to prevent things from happening in the future. And this is one of the options and, you know, citizens of Wyndham, is this what you support? Or do you want us to go back to the drawing? I mean, obviously we're gonna go and we're gonna look at some of these other possibilities. Definitely, we're gonna look for every other funding source we can. And our last resort, like us as council talk, the last resort is looking at our property taxes, the stormwater utility fees, that kind of stuff. That'll be our last resort. But if we don't have this and we don't get any of those other things, you know, those things might have to creep into play if we really do have to put out the money. And so I, I definitely don't want to end up that we're at a point where we have to go to those last three options that we didn't want to do. So I'd rather, I guess, put it to the public and say, what do you think? And then we go from there.
Another thing, I guess, if I live down here along the river or something like that, I'd be say, hey, that's fantastic. But if I lived out next to Tom White, I'd be saying, what are you guys gonna do for me?
I've heard from some of those people out there too, and they were devastated by some of this. That's a, that's a totally different situation out on uh, Cottonwood Lake, unfortunately. And I think there's some, some small items we can do to help, but twelve to fifteen inches of rain is not gonna make it. It's gonna make the situation come back. What can we do to help mitigate that? I think that's included though. This is like Jenny said, a cover off. You know, I don't like taxes either, but one thing I like to do is share that burden with people that come through town. Because we're not the only ones that are gonna pay for this tax. I think a low estimate, well, I know fifteen percent is low, but I bet you're approaching eighteen, uh, eighteen to twenty percent of non-Wyndham money being spent to help us that travel through town. That's what I'm looking at. I'm looking at that as it's not all our money, folks. Other people traveling through our community is gonna help us. And one thing we have to understand as a council and a mayor is through that process, when it goes to vote, what's on this resolution is what we can tell taxpayers. That's it. That's statute. You cannot go and lobby for yourself. Pretty close? Pretty close. You know, we cannot be performance. We cannot say, vote for this. We cannot go.
You can educate, but you can't advocate.
Educate, but not advocate. Correct. That's why you're a city administrator. Keeps the council under, in line. Correct.
Just a question for Steve. Been, you took this out ten years. You think collecting these funds, whatever they are, over ten years will get us what we need?
I quite honestly think it's a sunset prior to that. Because if you look at the rate of um, retail sales, even, even in Cottonwood County, when this was ran in twenty thirteen, which was, you know, eleven years ago, the estimate was this was gonna collect two hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Now the estimate is five hundred and forty-two thousand dollars. So the sales tax hasn't changed since then. But the amount of taxable goods sold within the Cottonwood County and with inflation and whatnot that's added to the price of those goods, that has accelerated the amount of sales tax being collected. The estimate that I had in the prior memo was it's about five hundred and forty-two thousand is based on today's dollars. What the estimate from Department of Revenue would be if we had seventy-five percent of the retail sales in Cottonwood County. And so I just used a, again, a conservative number and said, if it's half a million, this is what we would likely collect over this amount of time. So if you did a ten-year thing, that five million, I would think you probably have sunsetted this probably in year eight or year seven. But because that's the duration, that's what's in law. Either it goes to the end of the term or until you meet your dollar figure, whichever is earlier. So you will not collect it any more than what you're collecting, but you could collect less.
So to make it more palatable for our residents, could we do the half a percent over the ten years?
Remember that I think we want to bond earlier for some of this money. And I don't know what that would support. I mean, you're gonna have to pay more interest.
It, I mean, it's just a function of the bond. I mean, whether you took out a ten-year bond or a twenty-year bond and, and pay it back or how you would want to do that or if, you know, a shorter term bond, that's fine, you know? Um, but normally the general obligation bond, I don't typically believe they go less than ten. So you're probably looking at a ten-year. If you do go that route, you know, you could go, you know, possibly USDA loan or something like that if it would fit type of thing. And you could always pay that off early, but interest rates are fairly comparable. But so. But you can, you know, pull those dollars in over whatever term you want to pay back that, that debt. Um, and something, you know, fairly short term, you wouldn't have any call feature or anything like that. or probably just be a straight ten-year if you decided to go that route, but.
I think I need a request for council consideration. I did not ask for that. I think, I said, I think it's time for the council to.
Well, I can give you a motion if you want one.
If there's a motion, you should present it.
I would make the motion to do the ballot question at a half a percent over ten years.
I recognize the motion of Marv at, the motion was one half percent for ten years as to the ballot question. Is there a second? Is there a second? Hearing none. That motion is off the table and dies for lack of a second. Or am I supposed to do it three times, only twice? Is there other, any other consideration the council would like to make?
Okay. I, oh, go ahead.
I'll make the motion at one percent for ten years.
I will recognize the motion of one percent for ten years. That motion was made by Jim. Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
And that motion of one percent for ten years was seconded by Jenny. Other discussion now from the council. Yep, and is that agreeable to Jim as the res- as the resolution is stated? With your, the insertion?
Yep, as is stated.
Okay, Jenny, you agree with that second?
Sorry, that, that number then will change to four point five million. Or I'm, yeah, four and a half million. Because we have between 175 and 500,000 for the levy in Island Park. That then makes the other number the balance of what's left. And the estimate is to collect five hundred or five million, ten years at one percent. So take the five million minus the, up to 500,000, and that leaves you four, four point five. So, just so you know.
Correct. That leaves you. Yep, okay. Everybody understand what Steve said? It leaves four point five, okay. Okay, any further discussion? Jenny?
Like I said before, I think this, you know, it's not that we're, that we agree on this and that it's, this is set in stone. We as councilor would be agreeing on this to say, let's put this on the ballot and let our citizens decide how we move forward. So that's how I see this, as we're putting this out for the citizens to say, is this the option you want us to go? And, you know, if, if not, then like I said, we need to go back to that drawing board of the options. Hopefully, we can get one of those grant, you know, something that we like as an option, but I hate to have to do our property taxes or storm sewer or something like that. So this, I think, is a happy medium and let the public decide.
I, I guess, I don't really like to do it either. But I remember when Governor Lavandar put one percent into the state. And within two years, he wasn't, that wasn't enough money for him. And they started raising the sales tax, raising the sale tax. And, you know, one thing about it, we do know that especially currently with what goes on, I can't see a whole lot of alternative.
Other comments? I'll make one last one then. If I may, you can respond to it if you want. I totally agree with this going to the voters. That's really, I don't like taxes any more than anyone else. But this gives that opportunity to, to voters to learn about this. And it'll be their decision. And we'll stand by that and we'll respect that. Okay, Dennis?
Yeah, and by the time the vote is taken, we'll probably have more information on, on just what these funds will go towards and what dollars are involved in it too.
That'll be an ongoing work in progress for a little while. I mean, we'll get some of that modeling done and then as we identify other projects, obviously, we're going to work with FEMA and try to get everything repaired that falls under P A. But as like Mayor was talking about with discussions with MINDOT or D N R or Railroad about floodgates, things like that, various locations, that could, that could take quite some time. But just so you know, but yeah, we'll work on things as, as we can. But I really wouldn't count on the revenue until it gets through the legislature. And I would hate to spend a couple hundred thousand hours in engineering costs if it doesn't approve through there. So I think we should just proceed judiciously, no matter what the outcome on this is.
I don't think, if this passes, I don't think we're going to be the only community that's considering it either. They're going to have more legislation come before them that people will hear what we're, what the council may do here. And other communities may follow suit. So so with that, final call for questions. Steve, I'm going to ask for the real call. Okay, Nelson?
Yes.
Quaid?
Yes.
Benson?
Yes.
Grunig?
Yes.
Resolution carries unanimously. Thank you, council. Okay, I need my glasses. Thank you, Steve, for getting that information. Uh, maybe. Okay. Yeah, she's been sitting up here the whole time. Sorry about that, Tiffany. Electric department. Steve has been working with Marv and the Utility Commission on this project for some time. What's seen in your packet is an extensive agreement that covers a lot of materials. And so I am not proficient to talk at all about this. So Steve, you're, you're on task.
Thank you, Mayor. Give you a little overview and rely on Mr. Grunig's experience in the electric department. Correct me where I'm, I'm wrong. So the city was approached by a data center, crypto mining facility. The city has a robust utility infrastructure. And so they came and said, hey, we'd like to locate in your community. And so quite a bit of time was spent looking for locations, both inside and outside the community, but in our service territory. And they want to be in our service territory. We want them in our service territory as they, as I mentioned, use a great deal of power. Just to give you an idea of what we're talking about power-wise, with Toro running a little slower right now and no High Life, the city runs between maybe ten and twelve megawatts of power to run the entire city in any given hour of the day. This data facility would essentially double that. And so you're talking quite an amount of power. And so we've got the capacity, we've got the infrastructure to support this. And so that's why they're looking at Wyndham. So as we've been working with them on sites, they did locate a site outside of city limits and they're working with the county on that. But it is within our service territory. And so we've moved ahead, working on an agreement. Couple months ago, you had approved us using Boardman and Clark. That's a, an attorney firm out of Madison, Wisconsin. They also do the work for Compass, which is our joint action agency of which we're a member of. And so the Utility Commission, they went through them and then went to the council. So they've been, Boardman and Clark has been working on this agreement. And we've been working on it with the, with the company. We finally got to the point last week, very late, we had a special utility commission meeting on Friday. And they reviewed and are recommending approval of the agreement. The agreement is, was in your packet. I do have an updated version of it. There was some minor language change. And my understanding, the city attorney has also reviewed this and looked at key aspects of it. His expertise is not necessarily in utility, but for liability and protection of cities' interests, things like that. So he did review and has also signed off on the agreement. So what we've got is this agreement with the customer. The customer essentially will buy power off the real-time market. They will buy it themselves through our market participant being Compass. So they're not using any of the city's contracts that we've got for power. They buy it off the market. They're going to be providing us their capacity, resources that you need in the system, MISO system. They're also going to be providing the renewable energy credits that are required for that. And those will be done upfront. One of the other things that we have to do is build a line, it's a line extension from our substation out to their site, which is quite a bit of line. And so it is a customer aided construction. So they are paying for that extension of that line out to their facility from our substation. That will be cash upfront that they provide us upon execution of this agreement, roughly $750,000. They will provide that to the city. The city will then use those dollars to hire contractors, buy wire, things like that, and get that line extension out to their site. So they will pay for that. And then after that's installed and they start buying power, that will then be credited back to them a little bit at a time over, a little over three and a half years. They will get a piece of that back because it is a city-owned infrastructure. We own it as part of our system at that point. So that's the first piece of it is custom aided, customer aided construction. The second part of it, they will be providing a deposit, roughly 886,000 to MISO, which will be through our Compass, which is our market participant. And then the city will also have a deposit around half a million dollars because they're a large user customer. And we will have a deposit based on their average of their two monthly bills. And so we will have that upfront as protections for the city. So we're fairly well covered in the aspects of this. What the city will get out of it, what the utility will get out of it is basically wheeling. That means passing the power through our system. So we will charge them because we're not selling them power. They're buying it on the open market, so we don't have that risk, that liability. So we will charge them four and a half mils essentially for every kilowatt of power that they put forth. And that four and a half mil per kilowatt adder will generate approximately $35,000 a month in revenue once they get up and get going. And so that will be revenue to the electric utility within that enterprise fund, which is really pretty good because we lost High Life, that was a four meg load. And so we had lost that. So hopefully, this will help replace some of that revenue and that, and stabilize that, that fund. So that's one of the positives of this. There will be a little bit of employment, probably two to five positions just for techs and maintenance staff out at their facility. There'll be a little bit of property tax revenue to the county and township school district, but probably not, not a whole lot. What this facility looks like is essentially it's just a bare plot of land and probably about six, eight, ten tractor, semi-tractor trailers that get set on the ground on foundation. They're interconnected. And within those, they have a bunch of servers that run 24/7. And those servers will then run, and that's what that big power draw is. And so they have the ability to curtail those when we, when there's hot days and the price of power goes up in the real-time market, they shut their stuff off. And they do that so that they don't have to pay high-power prices and try to avoid the transmission peak and not pay that transmission. So I think I've hit the high points of this and I've probably thoroughly confused most of the folks on this. But as far as an agreement, I think it's fairly, pretty well put together. Boardman Clark did a good job with it. Ron's review was good, Utility Commission reviewed it. They would like to get started sooner than later, which is why we had a special meeting on Friday. If everything gets approved and goes forward, they would like to be operating prior, before the end of the year. So they would like to get up and get going. They would have some long-term plans for possible future expansion, but that's outside of our hands. Maybe with our transmission provider would have to make some improvements in the system to handle this. But there is capacity in our system. There's also capacity in our transmission provider system to handle this right now with really no interruption and no risk to the city of Wyndham.
My, my experience with this company has been rather good. I've, I've we, we've done surveying for it. Did a boundary survey and then they come back and ask us to do a topographic survey. And it looks like things are going a fast pace to get, to get moving out there. But I've been working with somebody from Houston, Texas and, and also Colorado Springs, Colorado. That's kind of their two headquarters. But I've been impressed with the company.
You, okay, Marv?
Let's start. You've raised a couple of questions for me, me, being that we're such a large user of electricity. But based on their history, they've been a customer of another Compass city for a couple of years. And that has been working out. And then the thought was about, well, we have a pork plant waiting to go online. And, but the capacity exists for that plant also. So that is not an issue either. So we should be well and, and good to go ahead with this project.
That was one of my questions. If we got Toro back up to speed and the pork plant up to speed, would there still be enough power to, if we had more load coming to town for some reason, would we have enough power to generate for all of that, like in a snowstorm and stuff like that? Would that be?
Yeah, no, there, there's plenty of capacity in our system. We have two 28 megawatt transformers. And so if you took the, let's say, 12 megs that the city is using currently and added this 12 megs to it, that's 24. You're not even 100% of one of the transformers yet. So there, there's quite a bit of capacity in our system. And our two transformers, one's been, you know, primary and the other one is secondary. And I think when talking with Jason, probably the idea would be to split that load, keep one on the, you know, one transformer and this load on the secondary transformer. So neither one of them get taxed too hard to operate. But they both be well within range and I T C has plenty of capacity in the line to handle this plus any additional expansion.
If for some reason the power goes down somewhere down the road, would our generator have to kick on and hold that load? Our emergency generator?
No, we, we wouldn't, we wouldn't run their facility. No. That'd be, it's an interruptible load, that's in the contract, that's interruptible.
That was actually one of the reasons I called Ron Schrammel. Not that I don't trust Steve, but in his contract reading ability, that's not it. It was just that I wondered, okay, what happens, yeah, exactly to your question. But there's force majeure language in there. There's different language that I didn't understand. And I asked Ron to review it and he said, the city's well protected because of that contract that you had that firm do. And that's why they did it. Good question. Anything further, Marv?
Well, based on the Utility Commission recommendation, I would make the motion to approve this large tariff user agreement. to approve this large tariff user agreement.
I'll second it.
Motion.
Mr. Green and Mr. Benson, can we add two pieces to that motion to approve the large user tariff and approve the agreement? Because they're kind of two different pieces. The one is an appendices of the other. So if we could approve them both.
That's what I said, I think.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Green.
And if he likes it, I like it.
Yeah.
Well, whatever Marv said was the motion.
The motion was to approve the large user tariff and approve the agreement between the city of Wyndham and Revolve Labs.
You agree, Marv?
Yes.
And a second? Second agrees. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. Audit Services RFP, Donna's here.
Our current auditing contract with, with the firm of Schwerner and Wanner is finished with the completion of the 2023 audit. I think that was a three year, was that a three year contract? So it is best practice to go out for RFPs about every five years. So with this contract up, included in your packet is an RFP that we're requesting approval from the council to send out.
Is this pretty much the same as the last one we did, Steve?
Yeah, it's, it's real similar and yeah, just we updated just some of the numbers as far as, you know, population, number of employees, size of the city budget, that kind of thing. Otherwise it's demographic stuff, it's pretty much identical.
Right. And we're asking for a three year and a five year bid, just to see what, what we give.
If, if they only give one or the other, are they?
It's one, the other, or both. Doesn't matter. Already did it.
All right. So one or the other or both. Counsel, have any questions for Donna or an action item here?
I'll make a motion to accept the audit from service from RFP.
Hold a second.
Motion from Scott was to approve the RFP requested by Donna Torkelson for the audit services for three and or five years. And a second by Jim. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And motion carries. Thank you. ARPA funds. Steve is, Ben's not here. Steve?
Yep, I'm gonna do this one. Well, Donna wasn't here at the time we had ARPA funds. So several years ago, when we got ARPA funds, I can't remember if it's 21 or 22. And ARPA is American Recovery Plan Act money. These were federal dollars that came out kind of after the COVID stuff. So we got roughly $420,000, $30,000. What the council did at the time was to, we bought a couple of pieces of police equipment. There was a drone purchase and I think radars were purchased. And the rest of the dollars got allocated or earmarked towards the new snowplows. Those moved through the budget process. They got approved and the orders were placed. And as the supply chain stuff hit and kept going and going and going, those snowplows arrived in May, Jenny, June, Jenny, something like that? May or June of '24, after they had been on order for a very long time. So during that time, those ARPA dollars did sit in an interest bearing account. So we did generate a little bit of income on those, which is allowed within those rules. We also had the trucks come in. We didn't have a second and third price increase on them, which was a possibility. So what we've got left in that ARPA account today is $66,144.35. And we'd like to clean out that ARPA account and so we can wrap up the federal reporting requirements, et cetera. And so in the 2024 capital budget, in the capital improvement plan, monies were set aside for the fire department for their wildland truck, which was part of that USDA grant that we were applying for. And then the city also funded a new insect fogger. And so what this request is, is staff, we're asking that the council basically approve using the ARPA, the balance of the ARPA money to fund that truck for the fire department that's been approved and that insect fogger. Then we can use those dollars, pull those out of that ARPA account, wrap up our federal reporting and be done with that. And so then under the financial impact, what, or fiscal impact, what this is, is those dollars that were allocated for those two uses were out of the general fund capital account. So those dollars could be returned to the capital account for the council then to reallocate this budget cycle. So that's a positive. Yeah, so we'd reuse those funds. But this is just simply asking that we, you enable us to use the ARPA dollars to fund those capital budget items.
Are you gonna remember to bring that up during budget time, that we can put that money back in?
I'm sure we will remember that. And I know at least one of the department heads that has some of these dollars set aside will remind you of that and ask that they continue to be rolled over to their department.
Of course they will. That'll be one consideration the council can take. Okay. We need action on that. Counsel wish to take?
I'll make a motion to accept the ARPA funds for the fire department purchased wetland truck and the street department equipment.
I would second that.
Motion Scott, second by Jenny to approve the requested use of ARPA funds. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. And those opposed? Hearing none, that motion is approved. Personnel hiring recommendations. Boy, it's been a while since you've came for a request.
It has. I know you miss me. So John Nelson, liquor store manager. So I have a staff member that'll be leaving, that we hired back earlier this summer. She was back for the summer. She'll be leaving the 14th of August. So we had some, an advertisement out for a few weeks. Through that process, we actually received 10 applications. Out of those applications, we chose to interview five of them. Four out of five showed up for their interviews. So I count that as pretty good. With that, we did have two really good interviews. We're looking to fill one position. But I think we can find a use for the other for kind of a backup position. Or else if we do lose another employee in the near future, we would have that in our back pocket and have them trained, ready to go. So it is my recommendation to hire Shannon Gombel and Travis Johnson, both at 1275 an hour, which is in accordance with the non-union part-time wage scale that you guys approved back in January. So.
Okay, so this is the non-union positions, two part-time employees to be utilized by John's scheduling and whatnot. So with that, anybody want to make a motion to approve Shannon and Travis hiring?
I'll make a motion for the two new hires for part-time liquor store clerk.
And I will second it.
Motion by Jenny, Jenny, second by Scott. It's getting late. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. Thank you. You'll be back later, I'm sure. Mayor appointment. I finally have one on the list for you for the hospital board. And I think this is, I think it's an outstanding appointment. I have talked with the hospital board administrator and the chairman of the board, Dr. Fisher, on this. And my recommendation is to appoint Kim Polatsky, who is an RN. So she's a nurse. She's the home care director for 12 counties in southwest Minnesota. She lives here in Wyndham, Minnesota. Her and her husband and, and kids. And she does an outstanding job as director. And one thing that when I, when I talked to the hospital, you know, they're, they're looking at this, this build out, out there with, of the medical office building. And their goal to, to look at a regional center. With Kim involved in 12 counties within southwest Minnesota. Their office is just down at Good Sam Home Care. I think it's a good fit for the hospital and they concur. So it's been checked and that's my recommendation for this council is to approve Kim Polatsky.
I'd make the motion to approve the mayor's appointment to the hospital board.
I would second.
Motion by Marv, second by Jenny to approve Kim Polatsky to the hospital board. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And that motion carries. New business. Yeah, they think we're getting to old business and I got a note here. This is what you've all been waiting for. I was sitting in Steve's office this morning having a discussion about our trip to, up to Farm Fest. And the, the phone rang and Steve took it. And he's like, hi, Mary. Let me put you on speakerphone. The mayor's right here. And it was Mary Lefler from Mindot. People have asked me, have we heard anything from Mindot on getting the four lane open? She started right off with the discussion on, we are taking a look at that now of comparing the crash data and to move forward at some time for a, a decision on, not now, but they're working on it. We're working on that study that, of moving that back to a four lane. I'm like, yeah, that's cool. They're starting that process. Next thing that was said, however, we have to discuss these stoplights. I'm like, what's up with the stoplights? And well, we moved from the 2009, or 1990, 99, I believe it was, or whatever, sometime in the 90s, to, from the traffic light design to now the 200, 2020, 2015 data. Not the 2024 data, but the, they made it all the way up to the 2015 data. And we have seen by competitive bids from other projects that that price that we told you before is no longer valid because the cost has increased. That number was about $170,000 back then. $178,000. It's now over $406,000 for our share of the streetlights. $420,000, I'm sorry. I missed it by a couple thousand. I was not happy and she knew it on the phone. And, and I told her, Mary, it's not you. It's the process. This is ridiculous. Our council was firm. Our public heard the numbers. It was unanimous comment on this from our public. The council followed that. They passed the resolution with one nay vote. Thank you, Dennis. On, on the streetlights. And now they come back and dare to say that we're gonna charge you $420,000 for your share of the streetlights out here? So after I said a few words, I handed it over to Steve and I, I walked out and let Steve handle the balance and you can fill in the blanks.
Well, I just let, let them know that I did not think that was a position that the council would go anywhere near supporting and that the mayor would bring this to you and let you know what's going on. And I would anticipate there may be a discussion by this council withdrawing that municipal consent that you submitted earlier. She reminded me that if there is no traffic signalization, Mindot would go back to looking at the stop sign option. And I, and I, and I told her, I said, well, Mindot had brought that up before. And, you know, I don't feel that's a viable solution either. But this is kind of, I think I said when mayor was there, that it seems like it's bait and switch to me. That here's what we're gonna do. This is the process we're going. And then as you get into it, that totally changes. So I did let her know that. And again, we chatted and, and so they were going to let us know in a month or so when they find an answer out to their engineering study on the crash data for the south part of the highway. So that kind of wrapped up our phone call. But then also kind of in, in full disclosure, I did copy the mayor on it. I sent an email off to our state representative and to our state senator outlining the issue with them because they needed to know what's happening with the state agency and that we're not happy about it. It does impact the county as well. I did have a little bit of heads up that this might be coming because the county engineer did get a phone call from Mindot. And they're pulling the same thing with the stoplights down by McDonald's on 62 and Sixth Street there, where the county has a 25% stake in it. So Nick had a little bit of heads up and he said, I'm surprised they haven't called you yet. I said, I think maybe they're gonna steer clear of Wyndham maybe for a little bit. But no, the phone call came today. So that email that I sent to the representative and Senate, state senator's office, I did also copy the county engineer on it and then our two county commission liaisons also. So they're aware of it. So I, obviously this is not the end of discussion. It's just the start of discussion. But as you can tell, the mayor was a little irritated with the outcome of the phone call.
They were, I, I was. I almost yelled. I think I probably did.
But can we get a guy out there with a lantern, kind of just waving down? Back in the old days, Scott, you got a person we can use?
Yeah. Well, that's an insult to our community after the work that, that our community put forward, that their willingness to come and talk in public in front of Mindot and say what they did. And that was hurtful for me, for me to hear that. And she had to start with saying, we're gonna look at the four lane now and we're working on that design and come back with, however, we gotta talk about increasing your place, price over double. And there's still some other things that Tiffany will work on with carbon reduction and whatnot. But that's, I hope it's a percentage and I hope it's 90% coverage.
Well, as you're well aware of, and Tiffany has shared before, Mindot does not believe that's a viable option for that grant. So we have a different opinion, but Mindot does not feel that that's a viable option for that grant. So I.
Well, understand.
I know, we will still consider, pursue it, but I, I don't, I wouldn't count on that being an option to bail us out of this.
I'm not counting on Mindot to come back with any other answer. But yes, we're gonna switch it back as you requested to four lane and that we're gonna do what's right down here. We gave you a price. And that's what we shared with the public. And if it would have been that, that, that number at this, at that time, I wouldn't have encouraged people to vote for it. Quite honestly, I think it's ridiculous.
A lot of the, stop. A lot of the frustration out it obviously is, it comes at a very bad time. But as you, the mayor stated, they're telling us these are 2015 standards that they're now enforcing. Mindot's been discussing this by their admission for, since 2016. So for the last eight years, they've been working on adopting these standards. And I said, well, if you haven't done it since then, you don't have to do it now. Well, no, the federal government required it in 2019, but they still haven't followed it. They're just now adopting the standard and putting this, it's a new fiscal year. July 1 is the state new fiscal year. So that's when they started implementing the new price change and the different design standards. So I think this is really kind of in bad faith.
Is Mindot the only place we can get stoplights from?
Is Mindot the only place we can get stoplights from? Well, but we need a light. I have four-way stop.
Put four-way stop up. Our people will get across. Down the street a lot quicker with a four-way stop than they do with the stoplights.
You're going to get somebody killed out there with them semis running through them stop signs, I'm sorry to say, because they, they run through the stoplights now. So you put stop signs down there, you're going to get somebody hurt. And I don't want nobody to get hurt over a stoplight, but there's got to be something we can do or get somebody down here to help us nega- negotiate with these people under good faith. Because when we were up there doing, doing their little spiel up there, they said, either you do this or we want money from you guys. If you do the one lane through town, we'll give you the stoplights at such a cost. Now they're switching again and saying, we'll give you your four lane if you buy us four hundred thousand dollar lights. That's not right.
They haven't promised the four lane. Just to be a hundred percent clear, they're not promising that at all. That answer still may be no, but they still want four twenty.
That was a carrot they threw down in the beginning of that discussion is how I took it. Soften the blow is say, oh, we're taking a look at this. However, there's just a little bit of price increase. That's a big deal through the city of Wyndham. Anyway, that was, that was my old business.
So we're going to pursue it legislatively, we will come back to stuff with.
I don't under, I don't understand why they let her, make her do her, their dirty work for them. You know, I think she's a halfway decent person, but.
I've got her number of her boss.
Yeah.
And, but I'm not going to talk to him. Anyway, that's Steve's job now. Okay, we're going to move on to contractor change orders and payments. And Steve is going to take care of this and then we're going to have John come back after these first two items.
Excuse me, let me get back logged in here for whatever reason. So yep, Jason is on vacation this week. Told him I could present these for him. The first one is a deduct. So this is for the generation project. There was going to be some movement of a Minnesota energy facility right by the new building. And so that was included in the cost due to our construction. However, Minnesota Energy has decided to leave their facilities right where they sit. So there's no need to move that. And then so that work which included some new concrete area and four bollards to protect that infrastructure from Minnesota Energy, that can be removed as Jason's memo states. And so the savings from that is thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-five, oh, sorry, nineteen, thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-five dollars. So that is a deduct on the generation project building. And this was approved by the Wyndham Utility Commission. So we'll do that item first and then we'll go to the pay request.
You know, I like deducts, someone please make the motion to approve that deduct of thirteen nine thirty-five.
I'll make, I'll make the motion to approve that deduct. I'll second.
Motion by Dennis, second by Marv to approve the Wilcon Construction Services. Pay request number eight with a deduct of thirteen nine thirty-five. Any questions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item, generation plant, Wilcon Construction Services.
Thank you. So this is the next pay request in the series for the gen project, the building. The pay request for this one is pay request eight. It will be for five hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars, nine. Okay, sorry, nine, we did pay eight. I was just looking at the list here. This is nine, sorry, thank you mayor. For five hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars. This is recommended for approval by Electric Utility Manager, Wyndham Utility Commission and our engineers S C H on this. As you can see, we're getting closer to getting this project completed. October is our anticipated completion date. And so about seventy-one percent of the project is completed at this time. So ask for approval of this.
Okay.
I'd make the motion to approve Wil, Wilcon Construction Pay Request Number Nine. Five hundred and ten thousand nine hundred and twenty-one dollars forty-five cents.
I'll second it. Motion Marv, second Scott to approve Pay Request Number Nine to Wilcon Construction Services in the amount listed. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Same sign. That motion carries. Liquor store project. Oh, is that a de, hold it, I see a deduct of ninety-two, ninety-two thousand?
No, that's just a batch.
Oh, it was in, okay.
All right, so John Nelson, liquor store manager. Here to recommend two contractor payments. We'll start with the first one, payment request number six in the amount of ninety-two thousand one hundred and ninety-eight dollars and forty-four cents. On this payment application, requests, all the change orders for the entire project were included. And there was a couple that were not included on that you council had already approved. So it is our recommendation to approve ninety-two thousand one ninety-eight forty-four. This would include one hundred percent of the project except for the retainage.
Council action?
I'll make a motion to accept the Sousner Construction Payment Number Six of that amount.
I'll second.
Motion Scott, second by Jenny, to approve Pay Request Number Six in the amount of ninety-two thousand one ninety-eight and forty-four cents. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next.
Pay Request Number Seven, this is for the remaining ret, retainage on the project, thirty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-six cents. There is three items that are currently outstanding on the punch list. They are very minor. The first one is they have to install toe kick on the cabinet in the back, in the warehouse space. That just requires the contractor to come and do it. It was one that got missed due to the amount of material that was in the warehouse space during that time when the carpet and the flooring was done. I have talked to Kevin Kurth, the project manager, and he assured me that that will get done. The second outstanding is we are waiting on one carton of attic stock for our walk-off carpet tile there in the front. During the project, the wrong carpet was ordered. They forgot to order that type of carpet and they ordered the carpet that belongs in the office and behind the counter for that area as well. That got corrected. The flooring subcontractor wasn't too happy in that situation. But they had, so they had to order and come back and install. They did not, they left us one piece of attic stock, which does not cover the contract amount. So Kevin has assured us, myself and the architect on the project, that the carton of material has been ordered. And we will receive that. The third part is seating, to, to complete the seating on the exterior of the building. As per the contract, they are scheduled to do that sometime this fall. They don't want to do it this summer just because the heat and things like that would not allow it to stay alive. So, so with that, with those three minor, we are recommending to release the retainage amount of thirty-eight thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars and thirty-six cents.
I have questions of course, since you're getting real close to fining this out.
I don't know offhand, I would say very minimal, less than twenty-five hundred bucks.
Yeah, let's look at the.
The material for the toe kick is onsite, it's just literally gluing and cutting the piece.
I get it, but I'm making my point here. Seating's thirty-five hundred dollars. Okay. At minimum. I would not pay the thirty-five hundred or have them issue a check back to the city. If you want to pay them the thirty-eight four fifty-five thirty-six, because you're considering this a final. Right?
This will be final.
Yep. And to me, I would never do that. That's my opinion, I wouldn't pay them final if they haven't provided the work that needs to be done in that facility. You don't do that, in my opinion. You'll probably catch me wrong some other times, so that's fine. But thirty-five hundred bucks is what I, have them write a check to the city for thirty-five hundred, you can make that payment. Now I'd agree with that if contingent on them issuing a check to the city. We'll return it after they're done.
I've, I've had that discussion with both Greg, the architect on the project and Steve. And our opinion was that it was very minimal. We, we had a good working relationship with Sousner and we do trust that this would get done, so.
Yeah, I think we had talked about holding on to having the payment process, but holding the check in our possession until at least the first two items got done. You know, then you would have that and so they don't have to come back and wait for several months on thirty-five hundred bucks for the seating as, you know, they've expended.
Is the seating because of weather?
Weather, heat. So it did not get done in the springs. Do you either want to do it right away in the spring or do you want to do it in the fall?
Guess they should have did it in the spring. I'm not, I'm still not in favor. The council can do what they want to.
A good point to that is if it got done in the spring, it would have been washed out with the flooding and we probably would have.
But you didn't know it was going to flood, that's not a reason. The, the fact is the seating's not completed, I understand it's not a big deal. But I don't do it till it's completed. That's my, my point. If the council wants to approve it, they can approve it. I'm just giving you my opinion and you know, I've been a stickler with you and the whole way here. And the last item comes up and I got to be myself again. So council can approve it if they want to.
I'll make a motion to, to pay the number seven of that amount due to the holding on of the check of until they get at least the first couple of them done.
I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded. To approve the, uh, the thirty-eight thousand four fifty-five thirty-six. And that's to get the first two done. And that the big item, the thirty-five hundred is what's left. But they just have to do the first two, just so I'm clear. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
Yes, one question. So that is toe kick on and the carpet delivered, they can receive the check. In the email discussion that I had with the architect, the plan was to pay the retainage when it was completed. Both, both pay apps were submitted and the architect approved both. And I did question that and then I took it to Steve, so. It's your decision, I'll do as you guys want me to do, so.
Okay, we've had a motion by Scott, second by Jenny. Jim gave comment. I'm going to call for the vote unless there's any other discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? One and four.
I'll say no too.
Fails three to two. Do you want any subsequent motions?
I'd make the motion to pay the retainage minus the thirty-five hundred.
I'll second that. Motion by Marv, second by Dennis to approve the final with, well, it's not a final. With the payment, Pay Request Number Seven and holding thirty-five hundred dollars until the seating is final. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. You made it? Well, thank you. That carries. Okay, thank you.
We appreciate you guys' discussion on it because we were kind of stuck in the middle of it and trying to figure out a good option and that's why we brought it to you guys, so.
Well, you had to know it was coming.
That's fine, Steve and I discussed pulling it from the agenda, both were submitted, we had more discussion. We decided to leave it on there, bring it up for discussion. I will let both the architect, which I'm sure he'll be fine with, and Kevin with Sousner Construction, that a check will be coming minus the thirty-five hundred. And that will be received, we can process that once the seating is completed.
Yeah. So. And I think that's, you can proceed with that payment under the regular bills and I don't think we need to see it again. Just under the. Yeah, if they don't seat it. I don't even want to get into the conditions of final completion when it has to be seated and growing, is that what it is? I'm a, sorry, I don't answer it.
I'm not sure what the contract says, but I can look into that if you'd like me to.
That's a process we have in America, that's why we have this process. That's what we do.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay, read the council comments. Hey, Scott, you're up.
Okay, no, this, that's just one of the processes why we live in America and why we do business here in America and how we do business. And that's why we want the, the input of our citizens and our, the people that come to us and rely on us to get their voice out. Sometimes we're not all in the greens, sometimes we are, but that's what we do and that's why we do our job, how we do our job. And if we can't count on the citizens of Wyndham to come to us with their output and their inputs to tell us how they want us, then sometimes we don't do the right thing, sometimes do the right thing. It's just a process we all have to take and understand. And once we get to that point, we accept it, whether we for it or against it. So that's just, I think that's, my idea is what I am as a city councilman, I'm here to give voice and give options. And sometimes they're not easy and sometimes they are easy. But I just want to thank everybody for what their processes are and how they come to us and tell us what they want and what they don't want. Sometimes they're good, sometimes they're bad, but we take that as a city councilman and a city councilperson as the process we live with. And we take it as with a grain of salt too. But I thank you guys for everybody's input on this stuff. And I want to thank all the city staff for what we go through on a daily basis. And the, the, the process, not the process, but the, the fun stuff too. We do the city night to unite and all the other stuff we do around Wyndham. Just enjoy it and love your community. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. Jenny?
I was just going to say, again, we, I think we had an excellent eighteenth year of our annual night to unite tonight prior to our council meeting. So I thank the council for allowing us to start a little later. I know we got a little later tonight than we usually do. But it was just nice to see the community come together. And then just a reminder, the Cottonwood County Fair is going on the rest of this weekend weekend. So hopefully we have a lot of people coming out and enjoying our town as they come and visit the fair.
Thank you, Jim. Marv, thanks, Jim.
I think Scott covered it, so I'm good.
Dennis?
Yes, the mayor was correct about, about Mindot.
About Wyndham, we want to anger the
Yeah.
Scott, your comment is stop signs would cause a danger with the truck stop. And I don't want to see that either, but this is, I thought the council was very generous in offering them a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to put them stoplights in before. When you consider they got ten times the vehicles that we do, my thought was we pay ten percent, but that's neither here nor there. But I thought the council was very generous in paying that hundred and seventy-five thousand. Really caught me off guard there. It was ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you, Dennis. Steve?
Just since the last council meeting, the sandbags around town got collected. Thank you very much to the volunteer groups that got them to the curb and into driveways so the city crews could get them picked up. Cities of Laverne, or I'm sorry, geez, Laverne, City of Marshall, City of Worthington, City of Redwood Falls and City of Mountain Lake helped out city staff and Snowy River contractors. So all those groups came in, we started in the morning about eight-thirty, about one-thirty, two o'clock, they were picked up. There's a couple that got missed here and there, but our streets folks got those picked up and so it was a good job done and I think it went very, very well and like to thank all those cities that helped us out and the contractor.
Thank you, Steve, and I see you did that in person today up at Farm Fest with the mayor of Marshall. So thanks. And Steve, a personal thank you to all those communities who helped as well and all the support we had from our volunteers throughout the city. I concur, it was a good night to unite and volunteerism was the head topic, so that was good. The one thing I have to add and the media, I would like to get you copies of this, maybe people have heard it, this is dated July twenty-fourth, but it says, Dear Mayor Jones, Senator Bill Weber who represents your city at the state legislature has been selected as a League of Minnesota Cities legislator of distinction for 2024. The League's Board of Directors recognized a total of twenty-five legislators this year, including sixteen House members and nine Senate members for their action and leadership on a wide variety of legislation issues important to cities across our state. The enclosed letter describes the specific reasons your legisl- legislator was chosen for this recognition. A copy of this letter and printed certificate has been sent to your legislator as well. Please share this recognition with your city council and the public at your next council meeting. We encourage you to share this information with your local newspaper and radio station. Publicly acknowledge legislatures, legislators for their support of city-friendly legislation helps to continue and strengthen the partnerships between state and local officials in Minnesota. And this is the letter that they submitted with it. Dear Senator Weber, on behalf of our thirty, eight-hundred-and-thirty-nine member cities, I want to thank you for your efforts this past legislative session and to recognize you as a League of Minnesota Cities 2024 legislator of distinction. League staff and member city officials appreciate your accessibility and your consultation, consultation with us on legislative impacting cities. Specifically, the League appreciates you serving as minority lead on the tax committee and playing an important role by highlighting issues facing small cities and identifying solutions to address them as well as raising concerns about legislation that would increase costs for local government across the state. You are a strong advocate on behalf of the city, of our city's wastewater and water treatment systems regarding funding needs and regulatory concerns. The League appreciates your awareness of city needs and looks forward to working with you in the future on issues impacting local governments. Our members know that in order to be successful in serving your common constituents, state and city officials must work together as partners to reach solutions that meet unique of, unique needs of rural suburban and urban communities all across Minnesota. City leaders also understand that without the support of legislative leaders like you, the state-local partnership would not be possible. To acknowledge your contribution, last session, mayors of each city in your legislative district will receive notification of your recogni- recognition. A press release will also be issued to media in your area. City officials and league staff look forward to continuing to work with you in the future. Sincerely, Justin Miller, he's the president of League of Minnesota Cities. So congrats to Senator Weber. Have you received that? Then we'll give you copies of this if you want to add some of that. So thank you. That's my thank you for the night to Senator Weber for all his work and all our legislators in our area and I think we can adjourn by unanimous consent.